And with that, we would like to offer to our county residents a State of the County Report, which we consider both a review of the past year and some insight into what we're going to be working on in the coming year. So I'll begin by noting that there's a famous bumper sticker, "Think globally, act locally." And there's a reason why that sticker's everywhere. We do this work for you every day as the Board of County Commissioners. Much of what we see in the world or in the national news, housing shortages, food insecurity, environmental concerns, have parallels in Monroe County. We may not be able to solve the world's problems, but we can work together to make life better for the people in Monroe County. And so with that, we want to offer some insight into what we've worked on recently and what we plan to do in the coming months. And while it's very easy to get in the weeds with bureaucratic details, doing that can make it difficult for many folks to really get a sense of what their local government is doing for them day to day, year to year. And with that in mind, we want to try to put these shares, State of the County address, into more personal terms. And we'll begin with resiliency.
Monroe County is not immune to climate change. Like much of the U.S., we've been experiencing more extreme weather events, periods of intense rainfall, periods of drought, and so on. We're developing a long-term plan to help Monroe County and all of its residents and its businesses be more resilient in the face of climate change. Working on this climate resiliency plan with the County Environmental Commission has been a collaborative effort. For instance, we've partnered with the Indiana University's Environmental Resiliency Institute to assess our future risks and identify actions we can take to mitigate those risks. While seven Indiana cities are participating, Monroe is the only entire county which is involved with the Environmental Resiliency Institute at this time. Monroe County Government also is hosting a McKinney Climate Fellow. That's an IU undergrad or grad student with expertise in the area of climate change, sustainability, and resilience planning, who will help to create a plan for Monroe County for climate resilience. The Climate Resiliency Blue Ribbon Committee is another entity working in concert to oversee the progress of our climate resiliency plan. My fellow commissioners and I appointed its members, and the committee has sponsored two day-long work sessions. The aim of these sessions was first to identify areas of vulnerability in Monroe County, and a second session to brainstorm about possible solutions. The committee will then work with the McKinney Climate Fellow to produce the first draft of the plan. Sometime this spring, we hope to have a plan finished for the commissioners to approve, and which will allow us to begin implementing it.
Like much of the country, we have issues, we have residents who face substance use disorder issues. And so I'd like to share with you some of the things that we've been doing. Monroe County has a Substance Use Disorder Awareness Commission. I think it's been in existence since 2017. And in the past, the commission was known as the Opioid Commission. Hosted, they hosted conferences. Of course, the COVID pandemic put a halt to some of that, and we switched to sponsoring lunch and learn programs. This past year, we had three of those, I believe it was. And we are currently planning a conference for this September, which will be titled Paths to Recovery, and it will be honoring the life of Greg May, who did so much within our community to help folks. Monroe County has continued its authorization of a syringe service program. We're one of only eight counties in the whole state that does this type of program. Syringe services programs are evidence-based and are there to reduce the risk of other health problems, such as hepatitis C and HIV. And those are things that can occur when there's needle sharing and using unhygienic needles. Working with the Health Department and the Indiana Recovery Alliance, Monroe County received an additional $536,000 as part of a special opioid settlement grant from the state to help the Indiana Recovery Alliance buy a permanent home, purchase a mobile harm reduction vehicle, and also so that we could purchase additional harm reduction supplies. This money is partially being matched by some of the opioid settlement money, which Monroe County has received through the national efforts at opioid settlement monies and suits. The, we have contracted with the Indiana Recovery Alliance to distribute syringes and other harm reduction supplies. Looking forward into this coming year, we have formed a working group to make recommendations to the county council as to how to use other parts of the county's opioid settlement funds to help those who are impacted by illicit drug use. And we are hoping to join with the city of Bloomington, because they also have received money, but do not have a health department of their own. We'll talk more about this later, but we're looking to bring in an IRX program. And so we'll need to have at least one certified recovery community organization here, or an RCO. So one of the recommendations that the working group will be making to the county council in the near future is to help fund the RCO and the training that their staff might need. And that brings us to a discussion of the jail, the justice center, the construction of a new jail. As you know, we've continued to support the sheriff's ongoing efforts to repair the facility as needed, plumbing, electrical roof, Sallyport, elevator. And we are awaiting a report from RQAW, which is going to offer concrete information on, and determination on feasibility of repairs. Now, this is a required step, but consultants have advised us that the multi-floor jail is problematic, lacks space for programming, and repairs will not be able to address this. But we will continue to support repairs being made on the facility on an as-needed basis. After we finalized the contract with DLZ to assist us with site selection, design, and initial phases of the project, we've continued to explore potential sites, especially, I think, one of, one important site of note that has, while a site has not been selected, it's important to note that when the Thompson property was discussed last, this past year, we did hold two different listening sessions in the neighborhood. And we really appreciated all those residents who came out and shared their perspectives. Meanwhile, we're awaiting some final information once we've received the, since we have now received the environmental geotechnical studies. And after we toured jail facilities in Indiana and Kentucky in previous years, we toured jail facilities in Arizona at the beginning of 2023. We went to Jefferson County, Indiana. And we went to Columbus, Ohio, Franklin County, Ohio. And we learned a great deal from staff and even from inmates regarding space design and programming. And one of the important things we learned was about the benefits of direct supervision. And it was interesting, because we were brought into a pod, and we were speaking with inmates. They have a direct supervision model. And we left that pod, and we were told after we left that many of those men were on trial for murder. You would have no idea. We were not afraid. We were not scared. We learned a lot along the way. And so we are eager to put all that experience to good use as we move forward with the project. So as part of the things related to the jail, we had had a report, well, we worked for several years with consultants, and received a report back. And after that, we created the Community Justice Response Committee, which operated at the end of 2022 and the beginning of 2023. We, as we listened, we realized that there were other things that we had to be pulling in at that time. So we, we decided to move forward on other fronts. As part of that, and I think Ms. Purdy played a big role in, the commissioners, the sheriff, part of the jail staff, two county council members, and Ms. Purdy and others on our staff participated in a three-day training program sponsored by the National Institute of Corrections. It's called the Planning and Opening New Institutions. This training helped bring additional focus to our planning efforts. And as we move forward on the property, as Commissioner Thomas said, we held two public meetings. And now that the sheriff has hired Cory Grass as the jail transition director, we hope to, again, in a different format, re-engage with that community. The process of selecting a site, designing, and building a new jail and justice center is slow, iterative, for a reason. It will ensure, we hope, that we hear from the stakeholders, department heads, elected officials, and especially, especially, the broader Monroe County community. The justice campus needs that we address currently will hopefully meet the needs of the residents for decades to come. This is a very weighty kind of thing. But with the support of Sheriff Marte, we are also working with Jamie Whitaker of Mental Health America of Indiana to bring an integrated reentry and correctional support program to Monroe County. This will require us, as I said earlier, to have a certified recovery community organization, something that we are currently working with a local nonprofit to create. And sort of segueing then into, one of the things that we have locally also is, we have a high-tech crimes unit that I want to congratulate the prosecutor's office on. This is to connect with improved safety for residents across our nation. This was, across our region, sorry. This was first initiated in 2022. It's a partnership between the prosecutor and the Indiana University Police Department to collect, analyze, and present data to assist with the prosecution of high-tech crimes in an eight-county region, including Monroe County. This is funded by a grant from the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council. Additional funding was secured again in 2023 to allow us to move forward this year. With all the phishing, scamming, the use of stolen credit cards and other high-tech crimes on the rise, this becomes more and more important to protect the residents of Monroe County. The grant actually pays for personnel, computers, and software. And I have to say, I'm grateful, because people tried to scam me in terms of, through payroll here at the county. So I do appreciate what's going on. Just a few other quick, other accomplishments over the past year. We merged our Human Rights Commission with the city of Bloomington's Human Rights Commission, so that it's just one unit that anyone has to go to. We approved a time to, we're working with the clerk and the election board to investigate the use of vote centers here in the county. Each election cycle, people end up at the wrong center or precinct location to vote, and they get there five minutes before the voting closes, and their vote won't count. Using vote centers, if you register to vote within Monroe County, you can vote at any of the locations that are available to you. And then we've also seen software improvements, especially with the overlays through our GIS department, that allows for all kinds of new exploratory things to be done here. So I want to congratulate everybody involved in that.
Another problem that the county has faced over the past few years is that the United States Forest Service developed a vegetation management project plan for the Houston South portion of the Hoosier National Forest. The project called for clearcutting 401 acres, logging of approximately 4,000 acres, herbicide application to 2,000 acres, and prescribed burning of 13,500 acres. Notwithstanding the fact that some of the foregoing activities would take place on highly erodible, steep slopes within the Lake Monroe watershed, the United States Forest Service prepared an environmental assessment document for the project, which concluded that the project would have no significant impact on the environment, and thus, that a more comprehensive environmental impact statement need not be prepared for the project. In May of 2020, Monroe County, along with the Indiana Forest Alliance, the Hoosier Environmental Council, and other interested parties, filed a lawsuit against the United States Forest Service. Lake Monroe is the sole drinking source of water for 120,000 people in southern Indiana, and already suffers from a degraded quality due to sedimentation and algal blooms. The county, along with the friends of Lake Monroe and the Indiana Forest Alliance and the Hoosier Environmental Council, will continue to monitor this matter and will respond as necessary to ensure that Lake Monroe is protected.
And along the lines of public health issues, as our drinking water, protecting our drinking water supply is, I just want to note that a few years back, the Community Justice and Mediation Center in Monroe County received a grant to study how to encourage people whose voices are less powerful to be heard in government, specifically regarding public health, environment, physical, and mental health. And public health really encompasses so many aspects of our day-to-day life. It, it's related to access to quality food, a sense of belonging, access to medical care, treatment of facilities, et cetera. I've been proud to be part of the steering committee from the very beginning of this project a few years back. And we've held a number of community meetings to ascertain the community's interests and priorities for public health. And along the way, we learned a great deal about public engagement and how to continue the conversation with residents of the county, those who are marginalized and don't have, or feel they don't have, a voice in government. That group is now called the Monroe County Health Equity Council, and we will continue our work on that council and hopefully move toward creating a health-in-all policy for county government as we consider all aspects of public health as we make decisions and enact policies. Moving on to money. Each year, as the county council gets ready to decide upon its budget for the coming year, the Board of Commissioners is asked to come forward and make a recommendation regarding salaries. And we feel it is incumbent upon us to ensure that the people that work for Monroe County are treated equitably and fairly. So this past year, the county commissioners, right before the council, asking for an eight-and-a-half percent salary raise. And along with that, we provided supporting rationale. County employees, to their credit, came out and supported this very strongly. It was, it was a joy to see some of them. And so this year, for 2024, county councils provided employees with the requested eight-and-a-half percent increase and boosted the salaries of the lowest-paid employees by an additional 55 cents an hour. And I want to commend them for doing that. Also, this, in 2022, the Indiana General Assembly, and this kind of goes along with sort of income and, and supporting our, our staff. In 2022, we know that the Indiana General Assembly terminated the licensure of abortion clinics in Indiana. And with that, Monroe County began offering up to $400 in travel expenses to anyone covered by our health insurance who was seeking an abortion because of the need to travel out of state.
It's not every day that people actually clap after we pass an ordinance, but that's just what happened in 2023, when we created the Capital Improvement Board. As you may recall, that board is responsible for leading the Monroe County Convention Center Expansion Project. That expansion is critically important to us and our colleagues on the Monroe County Council, as well as to those with the city of Bloomington and entities, including the Chamber of Commerce and the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. Of course, these past years were full of fits and starts, thanks in part to COVID-19. Fortunately, we are back on track and very excited to have a full complement of members in place. They began meeting in October and are ultimately responsible for selecting the Convention Center Expansion Site and site planning components, hiring architects, and taking care of many other essential details. It is a big job that the CIB members have taken on, and we want to thank them for their work so far. They include CIB President John Weigart, Vice President Doug Bruce, Secretary Joyce Polling, Treasurer Eric Spoonmore, and Members Mick Rinison, Adam D. Thies, and Jim Silverstein. We are committed to supporting you in this important work in 2024. For our part, this means collaborating with city officials on the memorandum of understanding needed to cover several key details. We're excited to take these next steps and keep Monroe County, the Monroe County Convention Center Expansion Project moving forward.
And another project that we have continued to work on, especially on the Plan Commission, which will come, and it will come before the Board of Commissioners, is the County Development Ordinance. And it has been many years in the making. And much like building a new jail and justice complex, these things are slow and deliberative processes for a reason. And it's because we are focused on bringing the public's perspective into the ordinance. And so, working with consultants, these new planning and zoning ordinances are moving forward. And there are a number of clear, clear benefits for the community. The language is clarified and simplified. There are graphic representations of requirements. So when someone says, "side yard setback," what does that look like? What is a side yard? There are fewer zones proposed at this moment overall. And so with greater clarity and flexibility for residents and businesses, this is a result of community engagement. And we've had a great deal of it, and extensively throughout this project. We've had meetings outdoors over the summers. We are going to have another set of public meetings to accept comment. And then, after that, there will be public hearings, both held by the Plan Commission and another set of public hearings held by the Board of Commissioners before a vote is taken on the County Development Ordinance. And huge thank you to the planning staff, members of the community who serve on the Plan Commission, and all of those who have taken the time to provide input. We do hope to have this project completed by the end of 2024. If there are a lot of comments or some significant changes that are going to be made, that may push the CDO approval into 2025. So go to monroeCDO.com for more information and to provide input and to look at where we're at right now.
Over the past few years, the county has bought parcels of land in North Park, situated between Elletsville and Bloomington. This was a superfund site that has been cleaned up for public use. We acquired it to make sure the land would not be used inappropriately. It is our intention to turn it into a park called Quarry in the Uplands. We hope to make it an indoor and eventual, an outdoor and eventually indoor park to celebrate Monroe County's limestone heritage. We also hope to include signage that will address the history of PCBs in our county. This property contains a number of quarries, an abundance of green space, and is conveniently located on State Road 46 by I-69, making it a good tourist destination. In 2024, we plan to convene a group of interested citizens to initiate community feedback on what amenities are desired for the park and begin the first stages of development. So if you have any interest in helping to bring this park about, please be in touch with us when we are actually creating this group of people.
And we do want to thank Ms. Ridge and the Highway Department Public Works for all of the efforts. And kudos on 55 miles repaved in 2023. That is the most that Ms. Ridge could find in her history books at the Highway Department. There were a sidewalk and drainage improvements along with that, of course. Sample Road, which originated in 2014, both the east and west, were completed. The Curry-Woodyard-Smith Roundabout was completed. That project started in 2018. I want to take a moment to thank again the residents around Fullerton Pike. When we initially began this project years ago, because of I-69 and NDOT's plans, we worked with our residents as Fullerton was being designed, and we heard their concerns. And the road was narrowed significantly in its design as a result. And those, many of those folks who were the most involved have stayed involved, and they helped design the roundabout. And that was the county's first roundabout. And it's an amazing roundabout, so we thank them for continuing to stay engaged and appreciate them. The Bicentennial Pathway Project is completed, getting completed. And Liberty Drive Cars From Greenway Trail Extension is hopefully going to be completed this year as well. Once again, since 2016, Community Crossings money has been awarded to Monroe County, and that's because we have Ms. Ridge and an amazing Highway Department. Also, using ARPA funding, brine equipment was installed. People around the county have noticed the brine trucks before an ice event or a snow event. And they're doing the work, and this is much better for the environment. And it certainly is a great safety feature for Monroe County residents. Fullerton Pike Phase III is going, hopefully, to begin the construction phase in 2024. The Vernal Pike Connector Road also will be on Ms. Ridge's agenda for 2024. There's a lot coming up, and some pedestrian crossing improvements as well for 2024. And speaking of all things transit, transportation, the rural transit service will continue for residents of Monroe County. The rural transit was notified in 2023 that it could no longer serve the more densely populated areas of the county outside of the city. We utilized ARPA money to purchase electric buses for rural transit. And as a result of that, rural transit created a secondary service outside of their normal service to continue to provide rides for residents in Elletsville and outside the city of Bloomington in the more densely populated areas. And the cost is being shared between the county and Elletsville. We're going to be billed based on actual service. And while the county committed to providing funding for the entire year, also using ARPA funds, the Elletsville Town Council unfortunately only agreed to fund the- Town Council unfortunately only agreed to fund the service for three months. I really appreciate the work of Chris Myers at Rural Transit for developing the plan. They came in with a cost less than Bloomington Transit for that service. And what's great for the residents is it's seamless. They're calling the same number, the same drivers, the same buses are showing up. And it's really evidence of the collaboration that we utilize to serve the residents of Monroe County. So this coming year, we are going to work with our partners in the city, in the town of Elletsville, at Rural Transit, of course, to determine how we get past March. And March is coming quick. So we need to make sure we complete the year, and then we need to talk about that long-term plan. And we attended a transit summit last week, and some ideas were floated, and I think that's a good start. And I've already mentioned a few ARPA projects, but we had more than $24 million allocated to Monroe County for once-in-a-lifetime projects. These projects for the American Rescue Plan Act will have a lasting positive impact on our county. It addresses the needs of county residents, and these projects were developed with the help of county departments, the council, community stakeholders, and residents. There's some ways to think about this funding. Four-and-a-half million dollars for housing, $650,000 for food, more than 1.2 million toward childcare, and infrastructure improvements, $11.8 million. We are all going to benefit from these programs.
So there's still a bit more to do. In 2024, we will work with the council as we finalize the remaining ARPA projects. We, of course, also have had, been working with our community foundation and United Way to have the Heading Home Project, which is helping right now to ensure that our unhoused veterans find a place. We hope to work on infrastructure at Osage Place, which is one of Habitat for Humanity project. We have our rural housing repair project, which would help keep moderate and low-income county residents in their homes. We have already given money to Pantry 279, to the People's Market for Food Boxes, to Hoosier Hills Food Bank for a new truck and additional food. We have helped to fund a new location facility for Community Kitchen Express at Carrasim Hunt. And we've also been out personally and helped with the food distribution at Hoosier Hills Food Bank and Pantry 279, along with also volunteering at the Hoosier Hills Food Bank Book Fair. So it's a lot. Of course, with our own county of employees, the people that here that make things happen, we use some ARPA money for retention bonuses and for incentivizing people to get their COVID vaccines. With our childcare, we've done pre-K Ready Program. We provided the final bit of funding for the Summit Hill Early Learning Center, which will provide childcare for infants and toddlers, as well as providing three low-cost apartments for onsite for people. We help New Hope for Families with their childcare, and also Smart Start Program through the community foundations. In terms of other projects, we've connected with, that are connected to public health and safety and wellbeing in our community. We're talking with Centerstone about supporting some of the residential projects. And we have, are working with Moms Demand Action for Guns Sense in America to provide gun locks and gun safes. These are safes that would go into somebody's vehicle to hopefully keep our community safer.
We have also, as has already been mentioned, instigated a number of projects, many of which are tied to climate resiliency, environmental stewardship, and public health. The Bicentennial Pathway, which is nearing completion, we have instituted, as has been mentioned, a brine system for icy road management that is much more environmentally acceptable than the application of salt. We bought the Monroe County Fire Protection District four new, four ambulances to help decrease response times, and we're initiating work on an airport drainage plan. We have also brought Wi-Fi to the fairground and Cars Farm Park. And at Cars Farm Park, two fields will be outfitted with artificial turf, and there will be lighting and drainage improvements. One of the things I'm most excited about is our solar project. This will provide for installation of solar panels for many of the county's buildings and properties. We have bought Rural Transit five buses, and as you heard, will be paying for the transit service throughout 2024. A particularly important project that we will be working on developing in 2024 is one to help people with failing septic. We hope this will help clean up our groundwater. And as you've heard over the past couple years, six subdivisions have been paved and received drainage improvements.
And we're really proud to have been invited to a Building Communities event at the White House. And we are actually going to be going there tomorrow for a meeting to share some of the things that we've been able to accomplish in Monroe County and utilizing the American Rescue Plan Act funding. And so these are just some of the many initiatives. It's been a busy year. It makes me tired to hear all of that. Many initiatives that we pursued over the last year to serve all of the residents of Monroe County, to reduce recidivism, to address the health, and especially the mental health of our community members, to enhance infrastructure, and to improve housing, childcare, and the availability of food. We have more work to do, and we are looking forward to it. None of us works alone, and we are optimistic about strengthening our relationship with our colleagues in the city. We appreciate everyone in county government, elected officials, department heads, staff, community stakeholders, and all of the members of the public who have provided valuable input and lent their expertise to Monroe County government. Anything else my colleagues wish to add to the report?
Well, there's, one of the things that you mentioned about us going out to the White House. This is a group being brought in from Indiana and Illinois, and we had sort of a pre-meeting discussion on Monday. From what I could tell, we are the only county commissioners across the state who will be attending this event. So it's a big deal.
All right. Anything else? With that, I appreciate everyone's attention today, and we did want to share with you some of the things that we've done and our plans for 2024. And we do invite the public to join us during our office hours or to contact us at commissionersoffice@co-monroe.in.us if they have any comments or questions.